Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Roll call Mrs. Burns, please.
Mr. Congdon.
Here.
Mrs. Boyle is present with prior notice. Mr. Feather.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach.
Here.
Mr. Morris is not present. Mr. Parentano.
Here.
Mr. Rudy.
Here.
Mr. Santa.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Akwam is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. This time I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in executive session prior to this evening's meeting to discuss matters of employment and issues related to labor relations. Any announcements, Mrs. Burns?
No announcements.
No announcements. Superintendent's report. Mr. Jones, please.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I wanted to point out, as I often do at these public work sessions, that this is the new month and we have new artwork around our room here. And so I just want to point out that this is Maple Point. Maple Point art teachers, Ms. Hanson and Rosano, some wonderful work. The teachers did a nice job, as has been the case in prior months, of explaining the artwork. As you go around the room, you can read little descriptions of the work that was done. There's some phenomenal, what they called kinetic art in the back, where if you look at it from the left, it looks like one picture, and you look at it from the right. It's the three-dimensional pieces in the back there hanging up on the wall. Our students have done just some phenomenal work. And so if you have a moment before you get out of this room, take a look. Very impressive. It's been a very impressive opportunity to see just art across the district this year. You can go to our website and there's a link to an online gallery of all the artwork that's been displayed here. So that's number one. Number two, we have a STEAM Expo coming up, April 20th, Thursday. Mark your calendar. This is a fun event for kindergarten through sixth grade. The event's actually held at the high school. It's going to run from 6:30 to 8:30. You'll see more information about that on our Facebook page. It's already been out there a little bit, and there'll be more keeping you informed and reminding you of that night. And again, to mark your calendar, in talking about art, we do have a very big district art show, two-night event, in May, May 24th and 25th. That's also at the high school, district-wide, and it'll run from 7:00 to 9:00, both of those nights. That's an early notice, but it's going to be here before we know it, May 24th. Also, before you know it, summer will be here. We have a lot of summer programming for our students. And if you go to our front district website page, on the left-hand side, on headlines, it talks about summer programs. You can click there and see all the information about our summer programming opportunity for elementary, middle school, and secondary students. I'd like to congratulate two teachers here in the Shammany School District who are in the finalist category for Bucks County Teacher of the Year competition sponsored by Inspire Federal Credit Union. Jody Curly, a kindergarten teacher at Albert Schweitzer Elementary School, and Kelly Alberts, who's a special ed teacher at the Carl Sandberg Middle School, are among 10 finalists. And then they will narrow that field down to three to be chosen for a final round. So we congratulate the two of them for simply making it to that very distinguished category of the top 10 and for representing us so well each and every day and representing all of our faculty. The last two comments I have is that at our next public session, right prior to our meeting, is when we do our annual employee recognition program. It's May 2nd, so first week in May, that Tuesday, May 2nd, at 6:00. We'll take some time. We'll be over in Maple Point's auditorium, thanking those who have had some extended service here with the district, as well as those who are retiring. And then in this board docs for this tonight's meeting, there's a report from Mr. Mayon. He's our Director for Administration, and he details a lot of the busyness that's happening out of his office this time of the year. So that's a good reading, exciting reading for you this time of the year. That's all I have in terms of my reports. And the presentation this evening is from Mrs. Holland and the Pqueston School. They've got a wonderful project that they want to tell you about. It's actually a couple of projects, a physical project and a social-emotional support program. I think both. Yes?
Yes.
You're on.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you, school board members. I am Joanne Holland, Principal of Pqueston Middle School, and it is a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm very fortunate to be in the community of Pqueston Middle School. Great community to work with supportive parents and caretakers, very dedicated teachers, and a very diverse student population. Middle school's not an easy place to be for kids, and oftentimes, it's important for us to make sure that we have programs to provide a supportive place for them. There's always something to celebrate at Pqueston Middle School, and one of those things, be it academic or co-curricular, one of the things that we are celebrating this evening is a program called Rachel's Challenge. We believe that it contributes to an extremely positive school culture. So I'm going to invite up here Nicole Puhulik. Nicole is one of our Rachel's Challenge Club advisors. So Mrs. Puhulik is a special education teacher as well, but she is really instrumental in running a new club. Rachel's Challenge is not new to us, but the club is new this year. So Mrs. Puhulik, if you would come on up here and tell us about Rachel's Challenge.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Holland. This is on me. Okay. Rachel's Challenge equips and inspires individuals to replace acts of violence, bullying, and negativity with respect, kindness, and compassion. Rachel's Challenge is based on the writings of Rachel Joy Scott. She was the first victim in the Columbine High School shooting in 1999. Her vision to start a chain reaction of kindness and compassion is carried out through Rachel's Challenge. To date, over 22 million students worldwide have seen the Rachel's Challenge program. We are fortunate to have had the presenters come to Pqueston twice since Mrs. Holland's first year in 2012. In October, a Rachel's Challenge representative came to Pqueston to present a heartfelt kickoff assembly. Nearly every student in the school signed a banner pledging to accept Rachel's Challenge, which consists of looking for the best in others, dreaming big, choosing positive influences, speaking with kindness, and starting your own chain reaction. 100 students were selected to participate in a training session with the presenter on ways to deter bullying behavior. This group was the beginning of our Friends of Rachel Club. Since then, we've done monthly, school-wide activities promoting Rachel's vision. We started a chain reaction of kindness that we add to throughout the year. One of the club's activities, with the help of Student Council and Pqueston SOAR, was Hearts for Rachel. I'd like to introduce Allison Karpovich, one of our club members, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about the Hearts for Rachel activity.
Hello. My name is Allison Karpovich, and I am in fifth grade. Ever since I came to Pqueston in September, the school has had a positive influence on my peers and I. One of the physical positive influence was the Hearts for Rachel project. The project was a secret project with very few students knowing about it before they went to their lockers on February 14th. Student Council, Friends of Rachel, and SOAR Club stayed after school that Monday on February 13th to hang paper hearts with handwritten messages that our teachers wrote on over 800 hearts. Every single locker in Pqueston, which would be over 814 lockers, had a handwritten messaged heart. I thought the best part of this project was the feeling on Valentine's Day, seeing the faces of the students when they saw the hearts on their lockers. They felt special. They felt like they belonged. I would like to introduce Sylvie Cologne.
Thank you, Allison. Hello. My name is Sylvie Cologne, and I am in sixth grade. To me, Rachel's Challenge means that everyone is included into a family. The family is positive and caring. Even if life at home isn't the best, you get showered with kindness at school. The school has already ensured that no one would be excluded with the mosaic that everyone got a piece in and the hearts that everyone got. The kids were in shock and knew that in the end, we were all students at a middle school in Feasterville, and we are equal. Each message was different, but everyone felt the same, special, and that was the biggest reward from Rachel's Challenge. Let me introduce Mrs. Stork, an art teacher at Pqueston.
Thank you, Sylvie. Great job. This Rachel's Challenge-inspired collaborative process emphasized a sense of community in Pqueston. Before the mural was even designed, the students had the opportunity to vote on the Rachel Joy Scott quote that would be incorporated into the mural. "I won't be labeled as average, and people will never know how far a little kindness can go," are permanently displayed on the wall upon entering the building. The students can take ownership in this decision and know that these quotes will impact everyone who enters the building. The quotes can be looked at as a chain reaction, which is one of Rachel Joy Scott's themes. We emphasize this theme by making the ripples in the mosaic. Each student designed their own clay tile. Each group had a theme, but the students could choose their size, pattern, and glaze. By working on an individual piece of artwork and donating it to a greater good is a wonderful way for them to experience community, collaboration, and a sense of being a part of something bigger than themselves. They get to understand firsthand what it's like to be an active participant in an experience that makes other people so happy. I am so lucky to have experienced this magical moment when the students saw the mosaic for the first time. It truly was a day that brought the school together to celebrate the results of kindness and collaboration. Let me introduce Kiran Mayon, eighth grader at Pqueston.
Thank you, Ms. Stork. My name is Kiran Mayon, and I'm an eighth grader at Pqueston. At Pqueston, we accepted Rachel's Challenge, and as Rachel Joy Scott had said, "People never know how far a little kindness can go." Rachel's Challenge started out as a school-wide assembly that impacted our fellow students on the inside. But this year, there was a change, a change that impacted the whole school community. There was a noticeable impact on the outside. As the weeks went on, the chain reaction did, in fact, spread to the entire student population. We were so inspired by Rachel's Challenge that each member of our student body created a piece that was placed on the new mosaic that will stand as long as Pqueston stands. Also, the Rachel's Challenge Club, Pqueston Student Council, and Pqueston SOAR Club helped create Hearts for Rachel on Valentine's Day. This profound act of kindness had a major impact on the students at Pqueston. In fact, over a month later, in fact, this still, this impact is still lasting today. Hearts are still on students' lockers over a month later. As we talked to students, some students said they don't want to show their friends that they kept their hearts on their locker, but it's middle school. What do you expect? And we continued talking to these students, and we asked them, "Where'd you put your heart?" All of them answered, "Inside my locker." That night, Mr. Stanley helped us create a video to show the community what we had done. And as the weeks went on, we began to see the video views increase. Today, the video has over 35,000 views on Facebook alone and has been recognized by the Rachel's Challenge Foundation, as well as neighboring school districts. Pqueston received immense praise for our achievement in the surrounding school districts. We're asking, how can we do something like this in our school? This is important to Pqueston as a whole and the surrounding community because it shows what Pqueston is capable of. And we would like to thank Mr. Congdon, school board members, Mr. Jones, and the administration for allowing us to be here this evening and for always supporting the students of Pqueston and our chain reaction, not only in the school community, but in the world. Thank you.
Wow. That was impressive. The story was impressive, how you wove together this Rachel Challenge and the mosaic, which is a beautiful mosaic. When you go into the front, that's the front foyer entering Pqueston now. It's just beautiful. I have some simple certificates that we're going to get up, Mr. Congdon and I, and hand them out to you, three young people who are with us. And I say they're simple because they simply indicate that you represented Pqueston Middle School this evening, but maybe like the hearts, you'll hold on to the certificates, and you're going to remember the fact that you stood up here so proudly and you did so well, each of you, all three of you. You should be proud. You had a quote that Mrs. Stork said, "I won't be afraid to be labeled as aver," I won't be afraid, I won't be labeled as average. Well, there's nobody labeling the three of you as average this evening. To be able to come up like that and speak so confidently, you certainly set yourself apart from average this evening. So congratulations. I want to thank the two teachers who were here with us this evening. So nice of you to spend some time and share such a wonderful story. And Mrs. Holland, thank you so much. Don't go anywhere. We're going to give you certificates, and after that, it's a good chance to get out of here and go do your homework, too.
All right. Once again, excellent job by the students, teachers, and administration at Pqueston. This time, we're going to move to public comment. We're going to ask that you please state your name, your area reside, your profession. Please no personal attacks. Mrs. Burns, please.
Mr. Rotis.
My son keeps telling me I should get an apple. I didn't know it was that easy. Well, you know, let's leave it at that. Good evening. I am Steve Rotis, and I live at Folgers of Flowers Mill in Langhorne. I always, I never like to follow the students and the teachers because what they do is so outstanding. It's really unbelievable. You know, what they've done, what all the artwork around here, it really looks great. So just wanted to say that now the budget season is in full swing, and I would like to discuss a few topics. So first, it seems pretty certain that there will be a tax increase this year, and I view this tax increase as inevitable after at least six years of no increases. And I applaud the school board for this fact. I think it's fantastic. During this period, the board has been mindful of the education of all of the 8,600 students in the district. Schools have been consolidated, outdated buildings have been closed, and a new elementary school has been opened. All the while, significant upgrades have been made to other schools, and the performance of the schools has risen higher and higher. New programs have been evaluated, and district response has been immediate if and when necessary. And all of these things have been for the better. However, now there are rumblings of the prior Shammany outlook of, "Let's live in the past. Go back to the 50s. Let's try and reopen closed schools." Well, allow me to remind you that considerable savings arose when schools were closed. Reopening a school would result in having to follow all guidelines for handicap accessibility, and in my opinion, would be an economic disaster for the district. The school district must continue to invest in education. In addition to the foregoing, another county has been forced by the courts to reassess all the real estate in that county, and that's a local county. I don't remember if it was Chester County or Montgomery, but it seems to be closing the noose around Middletown Township and Bucks County. So when that gets reassessed, that's going to be another, it could be another big shock to all the taxpayers in the area. So I say, go on with what you're doing. Don't look back. Don't look to the 50s. Don't go backwards. Go forward. Keep, keep your mind on the education, not, not so much on these old outdated buildings that you might love the location of. Thank you.
All right, Steve. Thank you for public comment and being in the public this evening. Okay. This time, I'd like to just mention the titles of the items for approval at the next public meeting. It would be Bucks County Technical High School Budget for the 2017-2018 school year. And also, there will be some bid approvals. At this time, we're going to move to the committee reports. We're going to start with the business operations. Ms. Hollenbach, please.
The next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, the 12th, 6:30. In this room, it is primarily about the budget and to see where we stand to close the gap before it has to be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Ms. Boyle had contacted us earlier this evening and mentioned that she was not going to be able to attend, so we will hear from her at the next meeting on the Educational Development Policy and the IU Board. This time, we're going to move to the Shammany Education Foundation. Mr. Feather, please. Mr. Feather?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading. I apologize.
Unfortunately, no, there's nothing to report on that at this time.
Thank you. Was there anybody in the Policy, Educational Development, or IU Board Committee meetings that would like to mention anything that was important, or we're going to let Irene report on that?
There was nothing since her last meet, or report.
Okay.
Last week.
Great. Yeah, meetings are back-to-back recently. All right. PSBA Liaison, Mr. Parentano, please.
At this time, nothing additional to update from the PSBA.
Thank you. Technical School, Mr. Rudy, please.
I gave my report last week.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move to our second public comment. Please state your name, area reside, profession. Please no personal attacks. If you wish to speak, please approach the bench. Limit it to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Adam Kovitz. I live in Levittown. I'm a digital marketing consultant, and I wanted to talk a little bit to mirror Mr. Jones, talking about the STEAM Expo. This is the third year that it's been run successfully. I am a, I'm a father of three. I have a son who, at the age of seven, had memorized the first 34 elements of the periodic table and would talk to me on his way to fourth-grade class about hypercubes and Klein bottles. There's more, but I only have three minutes. So having, having children like that who are inquisitive about math and science, about art, about innovation, I think is really important. And the STEAM Expo, again, for the third year in a row, they're running it. I'm telling you, and this is less for the people here, this is more for the, the parents of the district. It's a wonderful evening. You can't do everything in the two hours. My son, the first time I took him there, spent the entire two hours making paper airplanes and realized that there was still more to see. So it's a wonderful time. I urge all the parents of, of kids between the ages of kindergarten and sixth grade who have inquisitive children, love to express themselves, love to take her, love to take things apart, for better or for worse, please come out on April 20th from 6:30 to 8:30 to Shammany High School. It'll be a wonderful time.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak during our second phase of public comment?
John Allen from Levittown. I just came here tonight primarily, I, I missed the last meeting after you guys approved the Phase III of the Giza Project for Miller. I just wanted to say, while I was walking through the neighborhood, very excited, very happy residents down there in my neighborhood. Wanted to express my thanks for pushing that through. Honestly, I was a little concerned about it. The other thing I wanted to point out, or I wanted to make mention of, you're going into the budget discussions. I mean, they've been ongoing, but I know you have another budget meeting coming up. I know we saved money with the consolidation effort. One of the reasons, primary, not primary, but one of the main reasons that I supported that was so that we had money to put back into the classrooms. We got money into the special ed department. I don't want anybody being tempted to take it back out. That's just pleading with you. I know it's tempting because special ed is obviously an expensive part of the budget. That's pretty much all I wanted to say. Actually, I wasn't, I had more, but it was a little rushed. So again, you're going into the budget. You know, there, some things are low-hanging fruit, and, you know, in the zeal to kind of bring things down and ease the burden on taxpayers, I've often seen that cut. I've been on the receiving end of those cuts with my family situation, and it's not fun. Equipment's expensive. Therapists are expensive, as you know. So anything we can do for those students, I'm on board with. That's all. Thank you. Good night.
All right. I don't see anybody else coming down. John and Adam, I'd like to thank you for joining Mr. Rotis this evening in public comment. It's nice to see some, some other faces, some other friendly faces out there. At this time, does anybody have any future topics they'd like to bring up? Okay. We're going to move to board comment. Anybody have any board comment? Let me set the timer.
Yeah. Our Pqueston students and teachers that showed up today, Mr. Jones very eloquently, you know, covered their presentation. It's great to see our young students, especially at that middle school age, come up and be able to present so well. It's just a testament to their families, their district, and to themselves to have that type of self-confidence to come up here. So it's great to see that. The art looks fantastic. Congratulations to our Maple Point students and their, their teachers for, you know, evidently doing a great job and bringing out the talent that these students have. It's really, really phenomenal. Mr. Rotis, I agree with everything you said, and it'd be my goal to continue in Shammany, moving on the forward path. The STEAM Expo that was brought up, I've intended to The STEAM Expo that was brought up, I've attended that twice. Last year, I got a, they let me make a T-shirt last year, which is like the low-level stuff, but I met a couple students that, they were Miller students, as a matter of fact, that made a mag levitation train. It was really a neat little project. So there's a lot of great stuff going on there, and I hope everybody does attend. Mr. Allen spoke about the budget. Yes, we're going to be working on the budget, and we're going to do our best, and I don't think anybody wants to do anything to take away from our most vulnerable students. You know, we did save over $3 million on the roadmap project. Special ed, in the last year, year and a half, increased approximately about $2 million. But still, we're on the positive side, and we need to make sure we continue to provide for those students and continue to invest in the programs in this district. We're under a lot of challenges, pension being number one, but, you know, we're going to do our best to make sure we keep Nishamani creating the opportunities that our kids need to succeed in life and protect our taxpayers at the same time. Thank you all for coming out.
All right. I want to, once again, thank Principal Joanne Holland, our teachers Nicole and Kate, and of course, the students, Allison, Sylvia, and Kieran, for an excellent job. I've gone through the lobby at Pquesting and I was very, very impressed with what went on there and how they made that mosaic. It was just absolutely stunning. As Ms. Hollandback stated earlier, Wednesday, the 12th of April, 6:30 PM in this room, a week from tomorrow, I believe, right? We're going to be discussing the budget. I would like as many people to come out from the public and join Steve Rotis and us to understand, to get a real good understanding of where we're at with this budget. You know, as Steve mentioned, the pieces, the pension crisis that everybody talks about, and I know it sounds like a broken record, but until you come to one of these meetings and ask the questions, because it's an open forum, we're going to discuss the board and the people in the public, they can ask questions and we can have communication back and forth. It's not three minutes at the podium, it's as much time as you want and ask as many questions as you want. Until you dive into this budget, spending over $170 million each and every year, it's hard to understand what we're talking about. And I'll say that a second game, a second time, we spend here in the Shamy School District over $170 million a year. I don't know how many people I, I said over. I don't know how many people I ask in the Shamy School District, "How much money do you think we spend a year? How much do you think we spend? Friends, family, coworkers, people around town that I bump into?" Some people say, "Ah, 20 million." I'm like, "No." Some people say, "Oh, wow, 40 million. It must be $40 million a year that that school district spends a year." No, it's over $170 million each year. It's a big number. It's a lot of responsibility. Our administration is doing the best they can, and this board has been scratching their heads. As Steve stated earlier, we've been seven years, not six, seven years without a tax increase. You know, that says a lot for the hard work that this board and the administration have done over the past seven years, to be able to do what we've done in this school district over these past seven years without a tax increase. I think it's incredible what has been done, but there's a lot of hard work left to do. So I encourage everybody, Wednesday the 12th, 6:30 PM in this boardroom, to go over the budget, come out and learn a little bit about what we do with our 170-plus million dollars each year. Once again, Adam, John, thank you again for coming out and joining Steve. With that all being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second, please? Mr. Sullivan with a second, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, and good night.